Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Abington Board of Selectmen meeting, February 24, 2014. If you'd kindly stand and join us in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public announcements? Anybody have public announcements? No? All set. Given the cast of characters that are in this room right now, I'm going to put the -- I'm going to ask Ms. Deb Grimitte to come forward and make her presentation on Abington Reads 2014. Deborah?
Thank you. I had no idea I would be playing to a full house. This is awesome. I expect to see everybody at the library tomorrow to pick up the book, please. Just briefly, 2013 was the first year that the library sponsored a community reads event, and we considered a nonfiction historical work, Dark Tide by Stephen Puleo. We've decided to alternate between nonfiction and fiction in successive years, so this year we have chosen a suspenseful, character-driven mystery which highlights the speed at which ordinary lives can spin out of control. Defending Jacob by William Landay is the book selected for Abington Reads 2014. Without revealing too much, the book's main character, Andy, is an assistant district attorney who lives in Newton, Mass. with his wife and teenage son. A crime shatters their community, and our straight-laced prosecutor is very unprepared for what happens next. His son, Jacob, is charged with murder. He insists that he's innocent, and his dad, of course, believes him. In addition to being an intriguing mystery, and among genre fiction readers at the Abington Public Library, mysteries are far and away the most popular genre, this book has a great deal that's discussable: what happens to families in crisis, important for a community reads event, how communities react to crisis, and also how somebody who lives by a strict personal code behaves when they're forced to the other side of the law. Author William Landay will be speaking at the library on Monday, March 24 at 7:00 p.m., and we're pleased to again partner with Abington High School. The author will be speaking at the high school for students and faculty earlier on that day. Leading up to Mr. Landay's visit, we have a number of events. Please check out the calendar on the library website at wwwабingtonpl.org. Information about Abington Reads can also be found on our Facebook page and on our Pinterest page, which can be reached by following the links at the bottom of the library's homepage. Last year, we had between 300 and 400 readers. It's hard to tell exactly how many we had, but based on circulation of print books, electronic books, people who came to programs, people who came into the library and said, "Hey, I read that book," people I saw out in the community, we counted between 300 and 400. Print copies of the book are available at the library. Readers may also download e-copies from our webpage. And I'd like to thank you for your time, and on behalf of the Board of Library Trustees, thank you for the opportunity to announce Abington Reads 2014 to the community. Now, remember, tomorrow, library. The book looks very much like this, and there is one waiting for you. We also have buttons. If you want a button, there's buttons and print copies of the calendar I left with Dory. So, thank you, unless anybody has.
Very much, Deb.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right. Really don't know quite how to begin this, but obviously, I appreciate everybody. The board appreciates everybody coming here this evening to honor our friend, Mr. Wheatley. And I guess what I probably do first, and I was gonna -- I was gonna read the proclamation. I was gonna have anybody that wanted to speak come forward, and that would be fine. I was gonna ask my comrade here, Mr. Coyle, to read an excerpt from Mr. Wheatley's book, and then I was gonna ask Mr. Wheatley if he would be interested in saying a few words, but he doesn't seem to be very bashful, that's for sure. Okay. "Abington's Best: Russell A. Wheatley Presented February 24, 2014. Whereas Russell Wheatley has been a lifelong resident of the town of Abington, becoming king of the hill at the center school in his early school days, whereas Russell Wheatley started his surveying and engineering business over 40 years ago in the town of Abington, Mr. Wheatley has participated in many projects for the town over the years, working with Highway 2% Norbert Furdette, Richard Burns, and Kenon Canal on the Abington Center and North Abington Center improvement projects, Lincoln Street Hancock Street sidewalk projects, Lincoln Boulevard layout, and Klenowitz Way layout. Whereas Russell Wheatley has also been involved in other town projects: the John B. Riley Field, the new Memorial Baseball Field, lights at the Memorial Field, and Nisby Grant Bandstand, Abington Girls' softball fields, and Griffin's Dairy Farm project in Abington Senior Center. Mr. Wheatley has been the sponsor of Abington Youth Soccer, Abington Job Shadow Program, as well as the Abington Summer Concerts and the Abington Greenway Boosters. Russell A. Wheatley is an accomplished photographer and served on the Tricentennial Committee, providing the anniversary billboard poster, as well as many other photographs in a 300th commemorative book. He is also the member of the Mount Vernon Cemetery Committee and has been a judge for the annual St. Patrick's Day Parade. Russell A. Wheatley founded the Ruby M. Wheatley Scholarship, given each year to graduate and high school senior, and this is probably the most important. Whereas Russell A. Wheatley had the good sense to marry the lovely Phyllis Philbrick of Nashua, New Hampshire." Russell Wheatley has started -- has added author to his list of civic and personal accomplishments and written a book and memoirs about his experience of growing up in the Abington called Nobody Else Cares But I Do, and is an avid golfer. Russell A. Wheatley is widely recognized for his professionalism, his calm demeanor, and his commitment to the town of Abington, a true gentleman and a true Abingtonian. Now, therefore, we, the Abington Board of Selectmen, on behalf of the town of Abington and its residents, recognize with gratitude and appreciation the dedication, commitment, and many contributions that Russell Wheatley has made to the town of Abington, making it a better place for all of us to live, and making him one of Abington's best. Sign the Board's Selectmen-- Thank you. Is anybody in the audience like to say anything? You're more than welcome. Yes, sir.
Up here, over there.
Up here, please, so they can, uh, so they can capture it. Now, a little bit of roasting is prohibited. For those that are wondering about the crutch, it's a quick story. We were in Florida a couple of weeks ago with the grandchildren, and we were taking them to Disney World, and the night after they arrived, excuse me, we went to Disney the whole day, had a long day, came back, decided to jump in the pool. Well, the kids were already in there, so Grandpa decides he's gonna show off, so he leaps into the pool feet first, thinking it's five feet deep. It was two and a half feet deep, landed very hard on his heel. Has been on these things ever since. Anyway, I couldn't let an opportunity like this go by without, first of all, mentioning that Russ and I met, I think, at about the age six, and somewhere around there at the center school many, many years ago. And Joey and Russ and I were very close friends all through grammar school and high school, and Russ and I were closest buddies all through grammar school and all through high school, and he was my closest friend, and I'm just so honored that he's being honored tonight. And I just want to let you know how much everyone admires you, Russ. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else? Ian?
I'd just like to reiterate all the things that Russ has done for the town of Abington. If we thought of anything that we thought could improve the town, we'd go to Russ and ask Russ, how did he feel about a certain situation, or did he think that we could do this? Russ made everything possible, and Russ did so much behind the scenes, the town of Abington has no idea what he has contributed to this town. When I was so involved with the boosters, my husband, Jack, thinks if he was here, he would -- he would have been thrilled to have been here to see the honor that you're receiving, Russ. You totally deserve it, and the town of Abington appreciates everything that you did and everything that you'll continue to do, I know. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
An old friend of Russ's, and I'm gonna make it short, but Russ has been, as Bob Dennis said, a good friend for a long, long time. I guess I think back to eight or 10 years ago when I said to my wife, and this is all I've got to say, is that everybody in the world should have a friend like Russ Wheatley. And that's the way I feel about him. I guess that's the way everybody feels about Russ, so congratulations, pal.
Anybody else? Before I ask my comrade there, I would ask, because Deb's here, if we could get a copy of this in the library, because this is truly an amazing book, especially for people who grew up in the town of Abington. It goes back, and if you read some of the stories in there, and they're all short stories, and they're all wonderful, so maybe we could get you a copy over there in the residence if you wanted to look at it. I'm sure you'd really enjoy it. So, Kenny?
I want to read a very short story. It's on page 53 of Nobody Else Cares But I Do. I'm not going to read the title right away, because I want to leave you in suspense. But anybody that's up here, we're public speakers, whether you like it or not, and this is about public speaking, so I gotta kick out of this story. So, one year when I was at Tussie University, I had a course that required some training in public speaking. I remember one day, all the students and the instructor gathered in one of the small old buildings on campus that had a small stage. There was much anxiety prior to giving the short talk that we were required to make. But once I got started, I remembered I wasn't as bad as I thought. In fact, it was -- became almost pleasurable. As I went on and on, I gained momentum and probably bored everybody with my talk. When I concluded, I said to the other students, "I appreciate you listening to my comments, and thank you, one and all, for coming." I noticed a small door on the side of the stage, which I presume was an exit. I turned and walked through the door, only to find myself in the furnace room. The name of this is the furnace room, by the way. Not wishing to make a fool of myself, I searched the room for another exit, but there was none. So, I finally decided to swallow my pride and return to the stage through the door. However, when I got there, the next person was giving their presentation, and I didn't have the heart to walk out in the middle of it. So, I stayed in the furnace room for about 15 minutes until they were done, then sheepishly walked onto the stage and down into the audience. For many years afterward, my good friend Bob Dennis and I laughed about the situation. "Thank you all for coming," turning and walking into the furnace room. We repeated the charade verbally many times after any formal presentation we had to give at a meeting or gathering of any kind. This concludes my remarks, and I wish to thank each and every one of you for coming this evening, and then turning and walking into the furnace room. It provided a lot of humor for many, many years.
And at this time, I would ask Mr. Wheatley if you'd like to say a few words, please.
It's very exciting to see you all here. I had no idea, no idea that there would be so many people here. I'd like you all to meet my wife, Phyllis. And I'm unprepared to make a great speech. Give me a few minutes, maybe I can come up with one. See all these famous faces is quite a thrill. It really is, and I want you all to know that. You give me quite a thrill to see you all sitting there and looking so handsome and so pretty. And you guys, thank you so much for arranging this and keeping me kind of in the dark about it. That's very -- it's very good, and I thank you very much for it. And thank you all for coming. I have no prepared statement, but it's so great to see you all together. I mean, I grew up in Abington, grew up on Ashland Street a million years ago, and, gosh, so many people have come and gone, and some of them are still here, thankfully. So, it's been a long road, and now we're over on Randolph Street, a little different than it was, but we enjoy Abington, spend a lot of time working on projects, as you mentioned, helping the town out, and a lot of nice people, a lot of nice people. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Dory pointed out--
Okay. Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Okay. Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess.
Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess.
Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that.
At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Mr. Wheatley. Appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess and let this cast of characters exit. So, we're in recess.
Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting back into order. Next item on the agenda at 6:40 is transfer of common vicula license, 34 Brockton Ave., China Eatery. Would you like to come forward, please?
And this is to change the license. You're taking over the China Eatery? I take it.
Yes.
And will the hours be the same?
Same hours, no renovation. We keep the same hours.
So, basically, it's just--
Basically, just change ownership.
Yep. And we have, Dory, we have all the--
Yes, and I would say that it would be contingent upon violation of statute.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Nonchalant accept a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Burbidge, seconded by Mr. Dionne. Any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next item on the agenda is discussion of vacancy for Abington Director of South Shore Tri-Town Development Corporation. There was, we had posted this, and I'm going to ask Rick to expound upon this, but there seemed, the first meeting we had, we did not announce it, and there was some concern amongst a couple of the members about not having it announced. So, I had a concern. I spoke with Rick and Dory, and ultimately, we asked Lauren Goldberg for whether or not we had to, in fact, follow the charter. She made some suggestions. It was well worth it. We do not, in fact, have to follow the charter, but my feeling was, and I believe that Rick and Dory agreed with this, that we would leave this position open, just so the people of the town know that it still is open, and if you want to apply, it's on the website until Friday, this coming Friday. And at that point, the letters would have to be received by the town office. In the following week, we would have a special meeting just to make this appointment. The recommendation was, or the feeling is, that we could have it on Wednesday. There was a school building committee meeting, and that, but that's certainly up to the members of the board. They want to make sure that we do have, that everybody could make it. So, I don't know if you guys, you want to say anything further, Rick?
Just briefly, I know that one of the major, the main questions had to do with, again,
So, thank you. I'd like to call the meeting back into order. Next item on your agenda at 6:40 is transfer of common vicula license, 34 Brockton Ave., China Eatery. Would you like to come forward, please? And this is to change the license, you're taking over the China Eatery, I take it?
Yes.
And will the hours be the same?
Same hours, no renovation, we keep the same hours.
So, basically it's just-
Basically, just change ownership.
And we have, Dory, we have all the-
Yes, and I would say that it would be contingent upon violation of statute.
Okay. Questions from the board? Not an accept a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Burbine, seconded by Mr. Dionne. Any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next item on your agenda is discussion of vacancy for Abington Director of South Shore Tri-Town Development Corporation. There was, we had posted this, and I'm going to ask Rick to expound upon this, but there seemed, the first meeting we had, we did not announce it, and there was some concern amongst a couple of the members about not having it announced. So, I had a concern, I spoke with Rick and Dory, and ultimately, we asked Lauren Goldberg for whether or not we had to, in fact, follow the charter. She made some suggestions, it was well worth it, we do not, in fact, have to follow the charter. But my feeling was, and I believe that Rick and Dory agreed with this, that we would leave this position open, just so the people of the town know that it still is open, and if you want to apply, it's on the website until Friday, this coming Friday. And at that point, the letters would have to be received by the town office. In the following week, we would have a special meeting just to make this appointment. The recommendation was, or the feeling is that we could have it on Wednesday, there was a school building committee meeting, and that, but that's certainly up to the members of the board, they want to make sure that we do have, that everybody could make it. So, I don't know if you guys, you want to say anything further, Rick?
Just briefly, I know that one of the major, the main questions had to do with, again, the applicability of the charter appointment provisions versus the enabling legislation for the tri-town authority. And I think, to the extent that the board extends the application process, you, I think you are going beyond what was required by the charter, anyway. But I think it was a legitimate question that none of us really had a good answer to, in terms of, you know, what the carryover was. And Lauren, we have provided you a copy of Lauren Goldberg's opinion that she provides, sent to us via email for your review before you- Before the appointment happens. And she essentially opines that the enabling legislation creates us as a, it's a separate organization altogether, and the charter provisions essentially only require you to follow those provisions with regard to town positions, and not those of an outside third party. So, so I think it's a, you know, it helps us, because one of the concerns was, well, should we repost it entirely, and then wait another two weeks, or beyond that? And I, it's my understanding, and through the chairman, that the tri-town authority has a meeting on March 10th, and it would be very helpful to have an applicant representative at that time. So, rather than put this off, go through a whole other period of deliberation, hoping it up till Friday, and then making appointment next week. I don't know that we'll get any additional applicants, I know you have three very good applicants right now, so I think you're in a good position. But, but I think it's safe to say, in light of how this appointment became, became available through Mr. Levin's passing, I think we were all in a little bit of a quandary as to what the proper approach was, and certainly, you know, filling the position was secondary to making sure that his accomplishments were recognized.
Okay, thank you. I am going to read the vacancy notice before we go. And then, there was a question I had, who, the applicants, do you want to just go by resumes, you want the applicants here? I mean, you can think about that, I'm going to read this first, and then let me know what you think. Okay. This is to announce a vacancy in the Abington Director of South Shore Tri-Town Development Corporation. There currently exists a vacancy for the position of Abington Director of South Shore Tri-Town Development Corporation. This term expires, this, this office will expire in June 2018. The powers and management of the corporation are vested in the Board of Directors, comprised as follows. One member of the Abington Board of Selectmen, which is vacant currently, two members appointed by the Board of Selectmen in the town of Rockland, two members appointed by the mayor of the town of Weymouth. Directors of the corporation shall demonstrate expertise or education and experience in one of, more of the following areas: real estate development, housing, finance, business, environment, planning, engineering, transportation, or municipal government. Directors receive annual compensation at a rate of $6,250. If interested in this position, please submit a letter of interest, not later than Monday, February 24, 2014, to Dory Jameson, Assistant Town Manager. In the email is D, capital D, capital J, Jameson, A-M-I-E-S-O-N, at Abington, that's a capital, A-B-I-N-G-T-O-N, capital M, capital A, dot gov. Please note, this deadline is extended to Friday, February 28, 2014. All applicants must submit a statement which sets forth in clear and specific terms, a qualification which he or she holds for this position. And again, this is posted on the town website, if there's any questions, or you can call town hall, if you are unsure, or need, in need of any further information. So, I don't know if I forgot anything on this, I just want to be as transparent as we can.
It has to be in by the end of the day, a business day, noon time, or the end of the-
12:30 Friday.
12:30 on Friday, okay.
Good question. Okay.
And then what's the date that we would be meeting?
Well, that, I think, is a group, and again, we kind of assumed that everybody would be available on Wednesday, the-
Right, we suggested Wednesday, because at least two members are part of the school building committee, and so we knew we'd at least get two of you in one place at the same time. So, looking to build off that, we're suggesting a Wednesday night before the school building committee meeting, but that's really up to the boards.
Where is their meeting, Rick?
Will they generally meet at the Community Road?
Please, please.
I don't think it was going to be there this time, I think they were talking about the Paul K. Smith Room, maybe, I think, the last.
I mean, my preference would be probably to meet here before that, and then go to that meeting. I, I don't know-
I agree.
What the two people feel. And I just want to be sure that all the members would be available, if Wednesday is not good for one, you can change it.
Yeah, the sixth is good, I can make it the seventh, but-
The sixth is-
Sixth is good for me.
That's, that's Wednesday?
That's Wednesday.
Okay.
The seventh is not.
I'm sorry.
The seventh would be Thursday, so whether we're not in, okay.
I couldn't do it then.
What, what time?
Well, March 6th is a Thursday. I'm sorry, so I misspoke with regard to-
March 6th is a Thursday.
It's actually Thursday that's, is the meeting.
I can't make it.
You can make it the fifth?
I can make it the fifth.
Yeah.
You're going in for surgery that day, so.
So, how about we, yeah-
Really, it's up to you.
So, Wednesday is okay with Tom, right, the fifth?
Wednesday's okay, this, excuse me, the sixth, if it's Thursday, I can't make it.
Okay, so Wednesday's fine for me, Kenny?
The earlier the better, though, I have a meeting at 6:30.
How about 5:30?
Works for me, if that's-
No.
That's fine.
All right. So, if we would post that?
We'll post a special meeting at 5:30.
Here, right?
Yes.
Here. And then the next question I would have is what the board wants to do as far as, you know, you have resumes, or you want the candidates to come, and-
I would want both.
Oh, I mean, obviously, you need the resumes, I mean, we just, it's something we should let each candidate know, you know, what is expected. And you would want the candidates to make a little presentation.
Personally, yeah, if you have to.
Yeah, I, I think that's good, I mean, from a format, I, I've got some questions that I would ask each candidate, I mean, I-
Yeah, that's the only thing I would ask.
This is a pretty significant appointment.
If we do have questions, that we ask each candidate the same questions, I think that's the fairest way of doing it. And that's fine by me.
I just have one concern.
What's that?
To be, there's four of us, so it could be a dead vote, you know, could be, I don't even know what the candidates are, but I mean, it's just an issue that-
It could be, it could be.
Kind of makes it tough.
So, you have a shootout?
They're going to shoot hoops, or?
No, I mean, I guess what we would have to do in that case is wait until we have another member that could-
Or just, you know, if it ends up in a deadlock, and you take another vote, maybe somebody will change-
Yeah, no, no, I mean, if it actually absolutely ends up in a deadlock, and you're right, it could, it could change.
Yeah.
So, is that all right with everybody?
5:30 on the fifth.
5:30 on the fifth, correct.
Okay.
Okay. And the applications, again, just to reiterate, if somebody is inclined to, or wants to apply, you have until Friday, 12:30. And it was specific on what we use in the charter to, to tell us what your strengths and weaknesses, our strengths were, as far as this particular position goes. So, I don't know that we forgot anything. Everybody all right with that?
Where did that description come from? Was that right from the-
That's from the charter.
The tri-town?
No, as far as looking for somebody with real estate experience, or government experience?
That comes from the enabling legislation.
From their, okay, good.
Yeah, that is what they, yeah.
That's what they're looking for, as far as a member goes.
And then we did start with the charter, just so you know, I think you're probably aware of that, we were trying to go by some of the rules, only to find out that it was, it got us a little bit of model. So, Lauren kind of squared us all away, so it was good. Okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay. Number two is approval of Abington Little League Parade Saturday, April 26, 2014. I think that's in our packet. That's naturally, if anybody was seeking to have a parade in that town, require the permit. So, this is a yearly event of the little league. Questions?
Will we approve the parade Saturday, April 26, beginning at 11 o'clock AM?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Burbine, seconded by Mr. Dionne. Any further discussion?
Just that it's coordinated with the public safety.
Yes, it has been, they did.
Is that the local election day also?
No.
I don't think so, you're right, I think it usually is.
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
But I don't think it has any impact, right?
No, and it also looks for somebody to, they usually like a town official to say a couple of words, so if anybody would like to do that.
The chairman usually does that.
Yeah, it's usually the chairman.
The vice chairman.
I think I've probably done it the last, last one.
But that's fine, but if somebody has an interest in, by all means, it's kind of a fun thing to do.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion, if not all in favor, I'll oppose it.
Aye.
I think that's unanimous. Okay. Town manager report, Rick, please.
Sure. I know I got to you a little bit late, and I'm going to work, actually backwards off my list here. Just briefly, the, the school, the Department of Education audit, which is supposed to happen periodically, a little behind times, is beginning soon. And this is really a process of the Department of Education to ensure that the school is meeting various requirements, essentially that they are in compliance with the strategic plan, and that that plan meets the requirements of the state. And in that vein, I have been scheduled to have a discussion with a representative from the DOE, and it has also been asked if the chairman or another member of the board may be able to be available. I'm meeting with, either at that time, or by phone, at some later date. So, if you want to keep that in mind, it's, according to the school superintendent, it's, it's not make or break, but it would certainly be something that the Department of Education would be seeking as an optimal situation. So, give that some thought, if you could. In March, we do have our consultant, landfill consultant, Stephen Wright, coming in to meet with the board, as well as our audit firm. Both of those look like they're going to be on March 24th at this point, they both confirmed for March 24th. Some of you, I know, have already had a chance, I can see, and I've had a chance to take and probably look at the management letter, and I think you'll find it to be, that's been some good progress made over the course of this year, none of which I can take any credit for, unfortunately. So, so I think that's, that's a good sign. Our human resources audit is underway, our consultant through the UMass Collin Center has met with most of the applicable departments, and will be providing us a report. We do have some follow-up discussions to have before that happens. We know we have a lot of, a lot of gaps in our system that we can, that we've already been working at to some extent, but this will be a huge help in jump-starting us, and getting us on the, the right path. Veterans District, it was pointed out to me that I actually didn't attach the email, which I subsequently forwarded to you, I hope some of you had a chance to look at it. There was some, I think, some non-substantive changes that Whitman is, would like to include in the application, and I've been told by their town administrator that their board will be voting on this, taking a similar vote as this board did, they'll be doing that tomorrow night. So, we'll keep you informed of that. You also, I know, are aware that there's research that is primarily between the, the assistant town administrator and Dory in Abington, and doing some research on various intermunicipal agreements that are applicable and used around the state for this purpose, too. And our peer-to-peer project regarding some of the, the planning issues that I know have been brought before by the, by the board members, when I first began in trying to deal with, you know, the aesthetics of the community, the way it looks, and what zoning and other strategies we can use to begin to make some progress there, that should be getting underway this week, too. Couple other brief things, I hate to ruin an early evening for you, Mr. Chairman, but the Old Colony Planning Council did forward to us today the, the approval letters, which I've cited here in my, very briefly, that in terms of consulting with the Sage Group in the town with regard to moving towards green community status, the two issues that are still outstanding, as we talked about briefly last meeting, are the acceptance of the stretch code, as well as the, a bylaw pertaining to, a byright bylaw with regard to citing of facilities for renewable energy. So, those are projects, those are not issues, they're going to be ready for this coming town meeting, so these are going to take some time and some, some thought and education. But we're obviously happy that Old Colony Planning Council has agreed to, to help us with that. And of course, following up on Mr. Coyle's suggestion, we've really put that into full force, and gotten someone else to do all the work for us, which is something, every time we can, we try to take advantage of. So, and that would be the project of trying to have a good guide for businesses and homeowners, trying to do business with the town and its permitting agents. That's, I think, a pretty good project that Old Colony Planning Council can also put in a suitcase and bring around to other towns, I think it may maybe be a good template for a lot of other communities. Finally, with regard to some of the, kind of the financial status, not, I mentioned the audit earlier, but you previously been notified, I know, that, by the treasurer collector, Leo Provost, that the town's bond rating has been upgraded, which is obviously very good news, from, from a double A minus to double A, which is the third highest rating for municipality. It's also very good, considering, you know, the, the highest rated communities are those that tend to have really large commercial bases, Abington doesn't have that. So, it speaks a lot to what the town has been able to accomplish the last few years. Unfortunately, that doesn't necessarily have any positive impact on the town's budget process for FY15. Right now, based upon the estimated, well, based upon the proposed budgets versus our estimated revenue, and again, I caution, the proposed budgets, we're looking at about a $2 million deficit. I think that when push comes to shove, unless there's some significant movement by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts with regard to local aid, the town will be looking at probably an operating budget that is close to the existing operating budget for FY14, so, which is difficult, considering, you know, there are fixed increases that are out of our control. So, that's something that obviously will continue to keep you apprised of. Right now, the Finance Committee is in, is in the midst of a rather, I know many of you were on Finance Committee in town, exhausting process, they're meeting twice a week, and have been for some time, and are set to conclude their interviews with various departments the first week of March, that may carry over another week. And at that point, I'd be looking to try to provide a draft of an operating budget for next fiscal year. So, it's a little premature, but it is hard for me to envision at this moment that we would be able to have a legitimate budget proposal for an April 7th annual town meeting, based upon the state of the state, so to speak. But that, I think, is a decision for another day.
Thank you. Questions?
Just regarding the Finance Committee, Rick, who, who's the chairman, chairperson now?
Chad.
Chad. Love it. Thank you. Yes.
And I touched the website today, I didn't see that there was any sort of listing of the Finance Committee members, or whatever, or agendas, or meeting minutes, not a big deal, but-
No, but we'll look into that, I know-
Yeah, because it is nice to go in and kind of, kind of tell the players what the scorecard.
Chad was a little late for that meeting, so they, they did make him the chairman, so.
Oh, everybody just didn't step back, and look up at volunteers.
You have to show up.
Yeah.
No, I'm only kidding. He, he accepted it with great reverence, and of course, it, as you know, Maureen, the former chairman, is here, and she has left them adrift, dumbfounded, but they'll pick up their pieces. But, no, she remains, she continues to come to meetings of the Finance Committee, and try to provide as much guidance as possible. So, I think it's a good transition.
Rick, when do you expect that we'll make a decision on town meeting? I mean, it's, I would think our next meeting would-
I would think at your next meeting, next week, our Finance Officers Group is going to be following up on some of our discussions today, making sure that, to everybody's satisfaction, that, that we all feel relatively confident, and although we don't, might feel good about the numbers that we've seen, we feel confident in the numbers. And I think we'll be making a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen after that meeting, so you can expect it at your, at your next selectmen's meeting.
Thanks.
Do you anticipate any additional state revenue?
I don't know what to expect, Tom, to be quite honest. This is kind of an interesting year, I think. I think most cities and towns and public officials expected a local aid package that would be more reflective of the growth in state revenues, at least on a percentage basis. So, at this point, it's very difficult to, to say. I don't, I don't really, I can't predict. I wish I were more optimistic, but I'm not that optimistic right now there'll be any significant difference.
Yeah, because I see the, the lotteries, profitability increased by 20, 30 million, and I was surprised the Senate basically shut down, putting that into additional state and local aid.
Yeah, I, it's hard for, I'm so unqualified to discuss the politics that are going on at Beacon Hill, but I don't know to what extent the outgoing governor is leaving this issue up to future administration, but I really don't know. I think this budget process, as you know, the timing is such that it's right on top of us, and so it's very, it's very hard for me to envision that there's going to be any significant difference in FY, for the FY15 budget that we can actually work with. You know, I know you've all been through the process to the extent that, you know, there may be some, a local aid package or a supplemental appropriation that comes almost too late for you to use, and you've already made tough decisions, you've already dealt with difficult labor negotiations. So, if we don't start to see some movement in the very near future, I'm not, I'm not very optimistic that it's going to be different than what the governor has, at least in terms of changing the course of our march towards a timely town meeting.
Thank you.
Any questions? Rick, can I just talk for a minute about the Veterans Service District?
Sure.
When, when do you think that would be in place?
The goal is to have it approved by the Department of Veterans Affairs, the Commonwealth Department of Veterans Affairs in March, and on July 1. That would give us three months to set up our administration to be in place effective July 1.
Okay, fine. And we had received some concerns, and I'm glad we did, from veterans groups that, I guess initially they- groups, that, I guess initially they were opposed, well, I guess they're opposed to it, fair to say they're opposed to it, but I provided them, through the Town Manager, you know, what this was all about. And I want to be upfront, being a veteran, it's a very personal thing to me, to make sure this is done properly. And, I stated publicly before, that, that this is in an effort to provide better, or more service to veterans, and not less. And, in fact, if we are not happy with this arrangement, and it proves to be otherwise, which I'm very confident that it will work this way, that we can, in fact, withdraw, and go back to the other way of doing it. Is that fair to say?
Right. This is a, a district is renewed, is reviewed every, every year by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Veterans Affairs, so, and the communities do have the opportunity every year to opt out of, out of a district, if it's not working for them.
Right, 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 okay.
That being said, I, I know Mike had asked me some, some pointed questions about this in recent weeks, and I did provide an email to the chairman, I may have forwarded to the rest of the board, I don't recall exactly, about, you know, the administration that's required by the state versus what is being recommended by, well, I wouldn't say by me, but really at the advice of the town administrator, and, and Whitman, Frank Linum, who's been dealing with this for some time. It's rather unusual that you would have vacancies in a permanent position in contiguous towns, that provide an opportunity to do something. So, I think, at least take, trying to taking, take advantage of that. There are districts, as you well know, that have not been successful, and I think primarily because I think people got a little too overly aggressive in, in what they could accomplish. You know, you have, you know, significant geographic regions that just really didn't lend themselves to a, a district. I think the fact that, you know, Whitman Town Hall is literally 10 minutes from Abington Town Hall, and veterans from both communities can be serviced in both Abington and Whitman, by one and a half veterans agents, as opposed to a full-time agent, I, I think, can make a lot of sense. And, the other thing is, and this is not unique to, to Abington, Rockland, or any other community, but it's hard to get administrative support staff that is, can, you know, when you have, when everybody's dealing with one individual for budget reasons at each community. So, to be able to combine, you know, good veterans coverage with really good administrative support staff, for essentially the same price, that I, I think will benefit both communities. And, and if we're wrong, we'll figure that out, and undo it in a year or two, or three, if it stops working for both communities.
Right.
I think one of the things, too, we went into this with the mindset that we wanted to provide better service, it wasn't the mindset to save money. If we save money, good, but, you know, the mindset was to try to provide better service for the two towns, so I think that's the way to go.
And I agree, because I, and I don't see where we're going to save a lot of money anyway. I don't know that administratively, you know, Whitman is planning on putting their full-time salaries that they have aside, as, as is Abington currently, into this region. So, we're not looking at, it's not a matter of reducing staff at all, that that's not the point.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, if not, public comment. I, I'd just like to apologize, I did have the town clerk right out. The town elections are just around the corner, and there are quite a few post positions in the town that are, that nobody has taken papers out as such, and I also believe that there's openings on the Finance Committee, two openings on the Finance Committee. If you have a question, or a desire to serve the town, I just want to tell people that we really, we as a community, we govern ourselves, we have to have people step up and serve on these boards. So, if you're not sure, if you want to call one of us, or if you want to call the town clerk, and get an idea of, you know, what a certain position was, or town, even the town clerk, she could inform you, you know, what positions are open right now. And, I, I think that, it's a, you know, it's a kind of a double-edged sword, you get a lot of, good feeling out of serving your town, or any community, because it is part of our responsibility, but, you know, and, and there is some, some tough decisions that is going to be made. So, the papers are available at the town clerk's office, they have to be in by March the-
10th.
March 10th.
And, other than that, I don't have anything else. Everybody all right?
I make the motion to adjourn?
Motion by Mr. Dionne to adjourn.
Second.
Second, right. Mr. Burbine, any further discussion, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that's unanimous. Thank you.